Good evening. Good evening, please. I would like to call to order the Oregon City Council regular meeting for October 13th, 2025. The time is 7:00 PM. Please stand and join me in the pledge for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you would, please turn your cellphones off or to silence. If you would, that's everybody up here as well. And we will get started with our meeting. So thank you. Ms. Snyder, will you please take a roll call of council members that are present?
Mrs. Ackerman?
Here.
Mr. Drake?
Here.
Mr. Horniac?
Here.
Mrs. Pauloff?
Here.
Mr. Reeves?
Here.
Mr. Sander?
Here.
Mr. Wallenzack?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Please, all council members are here. I will also present at tonight's meeting is our Mayor Michael Seferian, our City Administrator Joe Major, our Clerk of Council, Josette Snyder, our Law Director Melissa Papora, our Police Chief Brandon Beegan, Assistant Police Chief Ryan Spangler, our Fire Chief Clayton O'Brien, Assistant Fire Chief Mark Mullins, and our Finance Director Nick Roman, and our IT Director Ken Meister. Our next order of business is to approve the meeting minutes from September 22nd, 2025, regular council meeting, and the October 6th, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Council...
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Horniac?
I move for approval of the minutes of the September 22nd regular and the October 6th Committee of the Whole Meeting as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Horniac.
Second.
Second by Mr. Drake. Does anyone have any objections? Hearing none. The minute meetings are accepted as presented. Our first item on the agenda is persons and delegations for the people that have signed in. We need to remember that there is a five-minute limit due to the vast number of people that have signed up to speak, and it will be a here-to. The five minutes will be up on the boards for you to see as you come up. So first up is Kathy Egan. Ms. Egan, if you would, come up and state your name and address for the record.
I'm sorry, Karen.
That's okay. I forgive you. Karen Egan, 4755 Brown Road. First of all, supporting the fire department through the SAFER grant is an investment in safety, strength, and future for our community. This grant allows the department to hire nine additional firefighters, ensuring they can continue protecting lives and property and our properties while reducing response time and improving overall community readiness. I urge you to find a way to secure the funds without raising our taxes. That's your responsibility as our elected officials. Ask yourself, am I part of the problem or am I part of the solution? Second, if you oppose the data center, why have you continuously voted in favor of its progress at every step? Whatever your position is, stand by it and do not let outside influence dictate your vote. Leadership means you won't please everyone, but your duty is to make decisions that reflect what the majority of our citizens want. If the final outcome isn't what you hope for, support your collective decision with integrity. Instead of pointing fingers or complaining about the lack of town hall meetings, work with your fellow council members to make that happen if you so want it. If not, the data center, then what? What positive solutions or new businesses are you personally bringing forward to strengthen our city? Three, there are different personalities on our board, and everyone brings their own idea for how to move our community forward. When elected, each of you swore an oath to honestly and impartially serve the citizens of Oregon. It's time to honor that oath. Work together, stop the public bickering, and restore professionalism to our meetings. Remember, it's not just what you say, but how you say it. Four, go back and watch previous council meetings. Ask yourself, could I have handled that differently and am I willing to do better? Five, if you're serving only out of dislike, division, or resentment, then you are not serving for the right reasons. None of you ran your campaign on a promise to attack, insult, or embarrass others. You ran to make the city better. Let's live up to that. Six, stop twisting words or shifting blame. Claims of being tricked, lied, or bullied lose meaning when repeated without evidence. Do your homework. If you don't understand the proposal that you're asked to vote for, ask questions respectfully and professionally before voting. Seven, I respectfully encourage city council members to uphold professionalism, politeness, and accuracy when engaging on social media platforms. Constructive dialogue and truth build truth. False accusations erode it. Remember, you represent our city in everything you say and do, so raise your standards. Eight, at the end of the day, we all want the same thing, a strong, safe, and thriving community. Our ideas may differ, but our goal is shared, to make our city the best it can be. When you come together with unity, integrity, and respect, you have the power to shape the community that reflects the very best of who we are. Move forward with the purpose to make our citizens proud to call this city home both today and for generations to come. I'm not even perfect, but I strive every day to be a better person and to do better, and I hope you will also. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Egan. Next is Julie Mittendorf. Ms. Mittendorf, if you would, name an address for the record, please.
Julie Mittendorf, 4104 Starr Avenue. Good evening. First, I would like to thank the mayor and city council for your willingness and commitment to be public servants to the citizens of Oregon. Having never been involved in city government, I'm sure there are many nuances into what goes on from day to day that I do not understand or see. But this is what I see. After watching last week's council meeting, there seems to be a lot of if-then planning going on. Let's take the SAFER grant that is on the agenda for tonight. At last week's meeting, it was mentioned multiple times that approving this grant hinged on the data center. If the SAFER grant is approved, then the data center needs to be approved. The city would need the revenue to match the grant money. It was not said in those specific terms, but it was implied nonetheless. Improvements to public safety should not be used as leverage on speculative real estate development. Real or perceived, this is a scare tactic to push the data center through. I understand the city needs to be sure it can match the funds for the grant over the next three years and then continue to cover the cost of nine full-time firefighters the fourth year and beyond. So my question is, if the city has the funds to purchase $2,258,350 in real estate this year, then why can't the city find the funds to cover the $1,476,419 over the next three years for the SAFER grant? If council did not pass ordinances and use taxpayer dollars to purchase property through the OEDF, then the city would have the funds to cover the SAFER grant. There should be a way, or multiple ways, to secure the funds to provide and ensure the safety of the citizens of Oregon with or without the approval of the data center project. Funds for fire and police should be a priority over the speculative real estate purchases. Real or perceived, the data center should not be a tool to pressure others into approving or supporting other ordinances out of fear. Secondly, if a town hall meeting is held, then it might jeopardize negotiations with the buyer. I would like to ask the City Administrator, Mr. Major, you stated last meeting that the buyer, Capacity LLC, is willing to have a town hall meeting, but you don't want to jeopardize the negotiations by having a meeting. And I understand what Mr. Roman's point was, that without the load study results, there is no real point to a town hall because you have already shared all that you know. According to the amendments to ordinance 183 of 2024 relating to the $17.3 million sale of 168 acres for the projected data center, the load study contingency is open until March 31st of 2026. I ask, if you have shared all the facts, pros and cons concerning the potential data center, then what would be jeopardized by a meeting with Capacity LLC and the concerned citizens of Oregon? Real or perceived, the fact that you are concerned about jeopardizing negotiations speaks volumes to the transparency, or lack thereof, of concerning the data center. And finally, I would like to ask everyone, everyone, to consider what the purpose and responsibilities are of city government. I am sure we can all agree that public safety and welfare, police and fire, would be one. Public services and infrastructure, including water, sewer, waste collection, streets, sidewalks, parks, and community centers, would be another. City government...
One minute.
...should be responsible for establishing regulations and planning, including local laws, zoning laws, licenses, permits, as well as long-term development plans. And finally, city government should promote community and economic development, supporting local businesses, fostering a strong, sustainable community, all of which would be under good fiscal management. Conversely, city management should not be in the business of land acquisition for business development purposes using taxpayer funds. The city of Oregon does not have its own money. All money is taxpayer money unless it is from private grants. Public grants are still taxpayer money. It is not fiscally responsible for city government to use taxpayer dollars for speculative real estate or its own through the foundation of OEDF. I understand and appreciate the desire to improve the city and have control over what is built. However, that can be done through establishing and enforcing local policies and ordinances and being welcoming and willing to work with potential owners.
Thank you.
In closing, please know that many citizens are paying attention and are concerned. I appreciate this opportunity to share my point of view. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mittendorf. Up next, Fran Wilber. Ms. Wilber, if you would, your name and address for the record.
If you need to adjust the mic, please feel free.
Okay. I have a few questions. I'm not even going over the environmental. Give you a break on that. I wanted to ask, how many of you had to sign PDA? I think that's what it calls, where you can't talk to anybody else about this data center? NDA?
NDA.
Sorry. NDA, because everything I read. There are some people that have signed it. I take it none of you guys? You guys rock, because all the other ones I see, I'm telling you. Okay. Most citizens didn't even know about the data center or its size until the very end of a meeting. The mayor said there would be eight or more. The mayor said there would be eight or more, this, I'm not sure about this number, 200,000 square feet? And then there'll be the trailers and diesel generators? Okay, from some of the stuff I read, that isn't good. I feel as a taxpaying citizen with a project this big, no decision on the data center until after the question answers session. The Oregon Ohio Veterans Park is outdated. There is only one swing, too tall for people to get on it. We still don't have water, can you believe it? COVID. Since COVID, this park has not had water. And you know what's sad? It's our only park. Mommy Bay is a state park. Pearson Park is a metro park. So where are the other parks here for kids to go? Because the one over there on Bay Shore is, I think there's one swing and it's way up high. Like I said, the garbage overflows until a neighbor, a neighbor, a citizen has to go and take the garbage out. A citizen, why is that, guys? Come on. I grew up out there. Your kids hung up out there, too. It's, it's not a horrible place to live. Am I right? How many times has your car been broken into? Your house? You've been called, bad names. You live out there? There isn't. Maybe you could have said I was when I lived there, but not really. We're really, it's a middle-class, the middle-class where we live. Get on the Bay Shore, you've got Sandy Ben, you've got Big Shots, you've got people. Sandy Ben, and I believe Beth Ackerman, had the majority of the money collected to put an inclusive park in our, in that park. He told me he'd never put anything out in that area. No, I'm sorry, you're getting way too comfortable when you can talk about your citizens. That's way too familiar. That, I'm sorry, that is uncalled for, to pick out a neighborhood? That's sad. The elderly lady in the scooter that day, that said her husband had to help her get into the restroom because she has a bigger scooter, so he has to go and make sure no one-
One minute.
-keep the door open and help her. I said, and the mayor was right there, Department of Disabilities, he looks at me and said, we only have two minimums. So you know what? Hack with that citizen because they can't get in the bathroom. Like I said, when you get comfortable calling your citizens names and saying they're a bad neighborhood, we might, might not be as rich as you, but I'm going to tell you what, we have more common sense and love than you've ever seen.
Thank you, Ms. Wilber. Up next, Connie Trudell. Is it Trudell?
Trudell.
Trudell, thank you. Name and address, please, for the record.
5046 Dove Road.
Please, name two.
Connie Trudell, 5046 Dove Road.
Thank you.
Supporters of the proposed data center in our community have used the word, quote, "cleanest," unquote, to describe this industry. Through my own research of factual information from numerous sources, I have learned otherwise. I have shared the links for several articles with all of our city council members addressing valid concerns with data centers pertaining to adverse health effects, environmental concerns, noise and light pollution, water shortages, strains to the electrical grid, increased utility costs to residents, and increased financial strain for the communities and the school systems. The literature I have shared with city council thus far is just a small sample. I recently reviewed a report entitled, quote, "What Hazardous Materials Are Found in a Data Center," unquote, from MCF Environmental Services dated August 2025. This report discusses the toxic waste generated by data centers, including heavy metals from servers, circuit boards, network gear, batteries, and other power sources, as well as cleaning agents, fire suppressants, coolants and refrigerants, diesel fuel, and other oils. As someone who worked in the medical profession for 30 years and was a caregiver for her elderly parents for 13 years, a valuable life lesson I have learned is that one's health is truly one's wealth. The state of health of our environment does impact our physical and mental health. For the sake of brevity, I'm going to primarily focus on the impact to human health from exposure to heavy metals. Some of the heavy metals commonly found in data center waste are mercury, lead, arsenic, cadmium, nickel, zinc, and chromium. These metals can leach into the soil we walk on, the food we eat, the water we drink, and the air we breathe. Mercury and lead are well-known neurotoxins, toxins, meaning they disrupt the functioning of the central nervous system, which is the brain in the spinal column, and can damage the tissues. Human exposure to heavy metals has been linked to Alzheimer's disease and related dementias, autism spectrum disorder, multiple sclerosis, amyotrophic lateral sclerosis, otherwise known as Lou Gehrig's disease, and Parkinson's disease. Human exposure to heavy metals has also been linked to chronic kidney disease, liver disease, autoimmune disease, and various forms of cancer. This list of health conditions is by far not exhaustive. In addition, there are concerns for higher rates of chronic obstructive pulmonary disease and asthma in those residing near data centers from the particulate matter, nitrogen oxides, and sulfur dioxide that are emitted by the power sources. These pollutants are also linked to cardiovascular disease and cancer. There are higher rates of hearing impairments in individuals living near data centers stemming primarily from the frequency level of the chronic noise, even if the decibel readings are maintained in the recommended range. Individuals living near data centers have been found to have elevated cortisol levels secondary to the chronic noise and light pollution. Cortisol is a stress hormone produced by the adrenal glands, and chronically elevated levels lead to inflammation throughout the human body, setting the stage for numerous health conditions. High cortisol levels have been linked to cardiovascular disease, diabetes mellitus-
One minute.
-and other endocrine disturbances, as well as immune system suppression, insomnia, anxiety, depression, and cognitive impairments. This list of health conditions is not exhaustive. There is a higher incidence of migraine headaches found in individuals living near data centers. This is thought to stem from the noise pollution and particulate matter emitted by data centers and the electromagnetic radiation produced by data centers. Vulnerable groups such as the elderly children and those with certain underlying health conditions are at higher risk for adverse health effects linked to data centers. I strongly believe our community needs to head in a different direction to protect the health and well-being of our residents and the environment, which includes our abundant wildlife. We have been entrusted to be good stewards of our environment by our divine creator and deeply troubled by the mindset that dollar signs take precedence over human and environmental health. To those who hold this view, I say, I wish you could see what I have seen, both personally and professionally. We cannot place a price tag on our own health nor on our environmental health. Instead, we must focus on the greater well-being of all. I'm opposed to the construction of a data center in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Laura Davis. Ms. Davis, name and address for the record, please. No speaking from out in the gallery, please. If you, if you interrupt, you will be asked to leave. Excuse me? Thank you.
Laura Davis, 5494 Bay Shore Road. Speaking again about the data center, I just wanted to mention that my husband and I visited other data centers down in Columbus, and one was in Hilliard. It's an Amazon data center. It was in the middle of a business district with shopping malls and office buildings and high-end homes. And I talked to a lady named Stacy who said that she, she told us about spikes in electric rates, power grid failure. Details were kept secret as, as well as real issues were hidden, and people were moving out. Now, we went to New Albany, that was a metadata center. The one in Hilliard was Amazon. A metadata center, 740-acre complex, one and two buildings were already done. There was massive construction. It went on for miles. I have pictures if you guys want to see them after the meeting. But it was loud noise from construction, heavy traffic, houses directly across the street, one with a for rent, for rent sign. We drove all around and took half an hour to 45 minutes to drive all the way around the complex. We saw buses transporting workers to and from the work site. Where would Oregon data center employees park? There was another construction story site about a mile away. There was not just one construction site, many areas were invaded and affected. A data center here would take over the whole city. We stopped on the way home in Haskins Middletown Township in Wood County. That's an AI data center being built. We drove to the site, you can get up and see the data center being constructed behind the fence. The only good thing about this was there were no houses around it. It's on a large span of country land. Sad thing is, there was farmland taken to build it. Middleton Township also fought against a second data center and won. I joined Facebook, Facebook groups in these cities to get information and feedback. There were complaints of increases in electric rates. New, in New Albany, there was a complaint about rust stains in the water. I asked about labor, if the data centers were built by union workers. He stated that although there were some union workers hired for crews, the contractors and foremen are flown in nationally and internationally to build several data centers. I know the union workers are expecting to build the data center, but there is no guarantee of this. In my opinion, the unions were promised these jobs to gain support for the data centers. I have nothing against unions or hiring union workers. I have stated my experience of being active in my union. What I have a problem with is that these workers, I feel, were misled to gather support for the data center. This was before the facts came out about the disadvantages of data centers in the community. Also, city council members were asked to vote on this project, project, without even being given full details. Although the council voted for this issue, I feel that there was too much trust and leadership at the time, and they did not question the details or were told that it was a big, and were told that it was a big secret. Now, here's the fireman grant. It was presented as a tool or leverage to get the data center deal to go through. The mayor again claiming dire straits just to get the data center, saying the city will not be able to afford the fourth year of payment unless the data center goes through. I'm not against the fireman grant at all. What I have a problem with is the manipulation tactics, the lies, the lack of transparency from current leaders. There is no trust, and once the trust is lost, there is no getting it back. That is why I'm encouraging that everyone get out to vote on November 4th. It's time for a change.
Up next, Wyona, Winona Nutter. Name and address for the record, please.
Winona Nutter, 4454 Bay Shore Road.
Thank you.
I don't have anything written down. Born and raised in Oregon, my parents moved here right after World War II. My dad was a firefighter, lieutenant, number three station, until he retired and died. My dad is probably the smartest man I have ever known. And what he did is, he came to every single meeting that you all had, every single time, because he wanted to know what was going on. And he instilled that into my sister and I. He's right there. What he said mostly is, get the facts, understand what is going on. So we went online, and we checked out the other 191 data centers in Ohio. And we got a little bit of snippets from the people that have already lived through this. We didn't find a single positive thing that they had to say. The money wasn't there that they thought they were going to get. And that it was just horrible thing after horrible thing, one after another. It was so bad, one of the councilmen actually went to council and apologized that he voted for it. So I, I don't know how bad that has to get for you all to, to get an idea that this is not good. This is not good. This isn't a left or a right thing. This is a right or a wrong thing for Oregon. And I think this is wrong. This is not what the people want. And I'm, let you know what we're going to do. We got together, and we're going to try to see to it that every single house and apartment in Oregon gets the information that we have, that it's not just all positive. You know, all this money is going to come in and it's going to be great, because it's not going to be coming in, and it's not going to be great. Some more of the papers we have. Top 11 harms of data centers to Oregon, Ohio. Economic impact of bird bee butterfly migration versus data centers. 10 questions data centers don't want you to know or ask. All I can do is ask you to please do not do this to your friends and family. We got a good thing going. We're asking you all to please, please, think long and hard about this and vote right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nutter. Randy Peters, Mr. Peters, name and address for the record.
Randy Peters, 63 South Stadium. I guess I'm here for the wrong meeting. I live next to a Karen that has been complaining against me after he steals two foot of my land. I mean, he's got maybe 10 complaints on me now, and now he's got two more on me that I gotta clean up, and I'm not going to do it. I'll go to jail for it. I'm tired of it. I'm tired of him. It's going to cost me $3,500 to have my property resurveyed. I'm going to pay it. I live on a, an income that's nothing. I'm tired of it. And he just keeps harassing me, and I am not cutting the grass underneath my split-rail fence on the south side of my property. I live at 63 South Stadium. You can go by and look at it. I'm tired of him, you know? And I'll go to jail for it because I'm not doing it. He lives, and he can't even see my trailers behind my pole barn because he put these big trees up on his property, you know? But he knows they're there, so he's filing complaints against me. And I was out there the other day, I just took pictures. He mowed on my side of the fence where my weeds were, you know? So tomorrow, if you guys didn't give him permission to mow it, I'm, I'm going to call the police out there and have them trespass it. You know? I'm tired of it. You know, I got, I got all the records here. I got, if you go on Aries, you can get everybody's property. I've been on everybody's property. Other neighbors have gave me their survey, so going off of their pins. I can tell you everybody's property, all the way down, seven houses. Yes, there is extra land there. Nobody's paying taxes on it, you know? But, you know, I got 165 feet frontage. He's got 75 feet, but now he's got 77 feet. So I'm paying two foot of taxes on his property. Randy Van Dyke used to live next to him on the south side. He's got 75 feet, but he's got 78 feet. Betty Hume, the only one that's right, I think he's got, she's got 86 feet, you know? Everybody's got more feet than me. I get the less feet, you know? And I'm going after the survey company because they did me wrong. You, right, you know, right there, right there on- there on the fence, he's mad at me because I put my pole barn up. He told me I couldn't do my pole barn, because he got a petition up before we moved in to stop putting the pole barn up. The other people that lived there wasn't going to put a pole barn up. He got it stopped because they were going to have horses. I don't have horses. But I'll tell you what, I'm thinking about getting horses. If not, I'm going to get piles of horse shit and put right alongside the fence where he has to smell it, you know? It's bullshit. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I get it.
I, I'm, I'm frustrated, and nobody does nothing. Everybody's a civil suit. You know, how the hell can people take it to, to court? You know, and already, he sued me for $25,000. I got the lawsuit. If anybody wants to read it. A tree, his tree fell in the front yard, and it fell on my property. He went out there and cut it with a chainsaw and left half of it on my property. And he cleaned up his half, threw it in the garbage truck. He was out sweeping his driveway up when we came home from work, me and my wife. Instead of coming over to the property line and saying, hey, Randy, my tree fell in the storm last night, and that's your mess. He ran to the house and didn't say a word to me. So later on that day, I had to call the police and have them come out. They came out and looked at it and says, yeah, it was cut with a chainsaw, you know? And he, he told, in the police report, it says, he told the police that he's going to wait and see what happens. Well, the cop gave him a ticket for littering. He had to come to court. He had to come to court. He sued me for $25,000 because I embarrassed him in court. Bob Larson's his name. I've been embarrassing him now, and if he hears about it, he'll probably sue me again. I really don't care. I'm tired of it. I'm at, I'm at my end.
I, I understand it. Mr. Major, is, is there something we can do as, through our building and zoning and whatnot, please?
Mr. President, yes.
I'll tell you guys in the office, bring all my paperwork.
Please come to the office, yeah, definitely.
You know, tomorrow, whenever, I'll, I'll be there.
Do you have a specific number that he can call to set up?
Yeah, if you could leave your, your contact information for me, I'd be happy to.
Right on that.
Yeah, his, his contact information is here.
Yeah, he had authorized, signed a petition, and he told me, you can't have it. Well, I got my permit.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Please, no, please make the call to set up an appointment, okay? If you would, thank you. Up next for us is Lori Bonson. Ms. Bonson, your name and address for the record.
My name is Lori Bonson. I live at 407 South Stadium Road. I'm going to be back, get back to the data center, and I don't know, I just have one question. I know the mayor about this data center. I know where he stands on it. I know where everybody, and the reason they want it. And since we have two candidates running for mayor, Mr. Seferian and Mr. Salander, I think it's a perfect venue to ask you, Mr. Salander, why you support the data center.
This is a time to address council. It's not a time to address an individual. Happy to talk to you any other time, though.
Thank you, Ms. Bonson. Up next, Carla Neely. Carla, if you would, please name an address for the record.
Carla Neely, 3127 Christine.
You can bend that up if you need to. Yeah, there you go.
Carla Neely, 3127 Christine Lane.
Thank you, much better.
Okay. I just have some questions for consideration that I'm not sure have been, they may have been addressed, but I don't have all the details. From what I've heard, I don't believe our infrastructure is ready for the loads of this data center, electric especially. I know that there's supposed to be a plant, another plant being built, but will it be ready at the time that the data center goes live, or will they have to run on generators? And how long would they have to run on generators, which are far more polluting from my understanding? And who bears the cost for this increase in electric production? Is it the taxpayers? Is it the data center for whom we're building this? What, I think I said, what would be the environmental impact of running on generators for a long time? Are there any restrictions on the data center as far as time running on generators? Are there any penalties if they go over that time? What about, sorry, I'm very nervous. I'm not a public speaker.
Please don't be.
The water. I don't know that it's necessarily a complete closed loop, and that it will, potentially, there will be runoff into the lake. This would be heated water. We're already in the shallow end of Lake Erie with incredible algal blooms every year. This is very disruptive to the boating, fishing industries. I'm a sailor. I hate sailing through that stuff. Birds, it's not good for, it's not good for the fish, it's not good for the people. We were lucky in the last water issue that Oregon was able to keep their supply clean. I'd love to have our supply clean all the time. I don't want to overburden it. Also, who gets priority for electric and water if there's a drought like there is right now? And in the summertime, when electric is, you know, everybody's running their air conditioners, what do we do if there's an overload on the electric? Who, who gets priority? Is it the data center? Is it us? Also, this 30-year pilot, how is it guaranteed? What if there's a change of ownership, or they change their name, or they go out of business? What happens to that 30 years of revenue? What happens to the site that they're on? Also, the fact that, you know, it's been attempted to be tied to the fire department. I think we have ways to pay for it. Yeah, CIFA. I'm all for that. I want us to have safety, and I want us to meet, you know, standards. But I don't think this is the only way to do it. And I think there are other options, and I'd like to know, you know, what options have been looked into? Are there other more environmentally friendly ways to do this? Oregon is known for its water, its birding. I don't want to see that harmed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next person of delegation is Leanne Neshkov. Leanne, if you would please, your name and address for the record. You can adjust the mic.
For short people.
For, I'd have to adjust it for myself as well. Thank you.
My name's Leanna Neshkov. I live at 5536 Eagles Landing Drive. I don't have any notes. I came here because I have a lot of concerns regarding the data center, which have been eloquently voiced by multiple individuals ahead of me. I am a retired healthcare provider. I was a RN for 40 years and have seen all the things that can occur as a result of environmental toxins, and the noise pollution that can occur causes, and I'm nervous too. I'm not a public.
Oh, please don't.
But I would like to know specifically why, we're only finding out about this now, and why there's a perception in the community already that this is a done deal. I don't feel that our council has been as transparent as they could have been in letting us know what's been going on out there. I think that can be remedied in the future going forward, you know, with more town hall meetings, et cetera, as far as big items like the data center. Also, with the data center, what has been done as far as potentially looking at the environmental impact from the EPA standpoint? I've made a lot of phone calls over the last couple of weeks to our congressional and senatorial representatives, to our EPA. We've emailed them and things like that, but I, I don't see a lot of anything happening other than a lot of talk about how this data center's money will help us in the future. And I'm afraid that if we look at short-term money gain, we're going to lose sight of the long-term impact on our community. I grew up in Toledo. I moved to South Florida for 30 years and worked down there. Came back here because I wanted to retire to a nice, small-town community with open fields, farmland. I have a park that I can literally run to in the morning, two miles, a state park, two miles from my front door. How is that going to be impacted by this data center? Toledo is building a giant water reservoir, literally across the street from this land where this data center is going to be. How is that going to impact them? I mean, do they even know what's going on over here? I don't know how you guys all communicate with other cities, but that might be something that they might be concerned about. I don't know. But anyway, I just wanted to say that I don't think this is the best thing for our community. I think that we need to get the word out to other people in our community to let them know, and I'll pass out flyers and do whatever, to make sure that people ask questions. I think that there's supposed to be a town hall meeting coming up. We'll be there, and we need to get people there to talk to this company, to ask them all these questions, and to see what their answers are, and not be satisfied with the pat answers. We need to see what their data shows, like this lady here who's gone to every place and done her due diligence and has found out all these negative effects. This is a tiny little community, 21, 22,000 people. You know, we're not trying to be some big giant city here. We're trying to be a nice little town with farming, open vistas, parks, birds, animals, open places for people to go. I love to take photographs and post them on the news and, you know, hang them in my house of all the beauty that surrounds us. And I don't want it destroyed by a 70-foot-tall building that's emitting noise at 80 decibels that subliminally will destroy my brain sometime in the future. I think it's, I think it's the worst thing that we could do if we build that data center. We could look at a solar field. We could look at multiple options, and we should look at multiple options. So I want to thank you for your time. That's all I got to say.
Thank you very much. Up next, Omar Smedy. Mr. Smedy, if you would, name an address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. President, Omar Smedy. 2949 Camelot. All right, well, I just wanted to, I actually wanted to address Mr. Roman, but I see he's not here, so I'll ask Mr. Major. I was just curious about the TARDIS stops throughout the city. There's two that I'm concerned about in particular, particularly on wheeling, that were placed in residents' yards. And unfortunately, I see TARDIS patrons are disrespectful to those neighbors. They leave trash in their yards. It's unacceptable. I see it all the time. I see people just laying around in their yards. I just, I don't feel like that is an appropriate place to have a TARDIS stop. Like, I just feel like, you know, if you're going to have it on wheeling, that it should be on city property or maybe a business, maybe Star Plaza. I don't know. Star Square, I meant to say. That's all on Another topic, I came here for, of course, the biggie is the SAFER grant. You know, I've supported the fire department through my photography and through my writing. And, you know, this is a big topic, and I'm a little concerned, because I remember, this was Resolution 103, 2025, back on June 2nd. I was here, Ryan was here, all of you were here, in fact, every one of you. And that day, as I recall, the chief stated, you know, stipulations and so forth. Thank you, Ryan. And nobody seemed to question anything when Mr. Mayor stated that he had a concern that in the past there was no match available, and that he made it crystal clear that if we were to accept this safety, SAFER grant, that he was optimistic about it because there were futuristic funds that would be available. He made it very clear that day that that's what, what he was riding on. But yet, four months and four days later, a city council member, particularly from the safety committee, all of a sudden felt threatened about a vote. But yet, I recall that day, nobody from the safety committee, in fact, nobody at all questioned the mayor when he said that, his statement about future optimism about funds, revenues being available to, to do this grant. And so I'm a little concerned about that. Another thing I was concerned about that particular day, June 2nd, you know, when, when Mr. Major presented it, I recall, he stated that we had lost 18 part-time firefighters, but yet, since 2022, we gained 17 of them. But that same time, chief was asking for nine full-time firefighters, but it wasn't clear to me why all of a sudden, and the way Major presented it was like there wasn't a problem, that these part-time, the 17 part-time firefighters were fulfilling the needs of the department, but yet, that same day, we're asking for nine full-time firefighters. And I, it just, I, I felt a little uncertain about why that all.
One minute.
It, it just didn't seem like it was very clear to me why, why all of a sudden we were asking for nine when all these part-time firefighters are covering. In fact, you, you made it very clear. You said two to one. The hours were, were up, productivity, I should say. So I just wanted clarification on that, Mr. Major, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smedy. And our last speaker, person of delegation is Gary Thompson. Mr. Thompson, if you would, name an address, please, for the record.
Gary Thompson, 5808 Seaman Road, Oregon, Ohio. I live down the street from Randy. He's a good neighbor. I first got to say, I don't know if all of you have been sitting up here, if you can read that sign. When I grew up, it was illegal to have that kind of language in a public place. And I can't believe we're sitting here as a civic discourse allowing that sign to stand in this city. It says, "Forceful unlawful carnal knowledge, the data center," which is a 16th-century English term. It's where the word comes from. But people, I mean, if, if that guy's going to sit there with the sign, I don't think there's anything else to say. I mean, you can't have a conversation with someone. And I think the civic standards, if we're not going to remove it, I don't know if you've checked the law. It's probably from the 1800s, you know? But I, I don't know, I don't know what else to say. Like, how are you supposed to have a nice conversation and, and have civil discourse and debate with people that come at you with foul and vulgar language?
Mr. Thompson, I agree with you 110% on that.
That's not freedom of speech.
Well, that's what they'll fight, and that's why our country is like it is today.
Then we ought to stand up for what's right, like everybody in this room's been saying, and do the right thing, and ask the gentleman to at least put his sign away. He has every right to be here. He has every right to come up and talk.
Correct.
But the fact that he's going to have a sign, you know, my kids aren't here, and I used to have young kids. They're all older now. And we have, I think, someone reporting for high school about the decorum in city council sitting next to me in the audience. It's ridiculous. Having said that, everybody that's opposed to data centers, here's what I would say. We have land in the city of Oregon in an industrial park. Most of it is zoned M1. The analogy I would use, if you're going, if your neighbor goes and builds a house, or that farm field next year is really zoned M2 or R2 or R4, when they go to build a house, do you run up and say, hey, you can't build a house there? And if you're building a house there, it better be two stories, and it better not block my view, and it better be colored blue, and it better have windows on this side. I appreciate all of the citizens' input, and they have every right to do it. But twice, the representatives of the data center have sat right in those chairs, asked for questions from this body in the audience, and received none. asked for questions from this body in the audience, and received none. And now there's a clamoring for an open house, which I think is being scheduled, if I'm not mistaken. They're following the law, and they're trying to develop a piece of property that will benefit not only the city of Oregon, but the city schools. And for all those folks, what about other uses? That piece of property has been evaluated for other uses for a very long time. And when I play golf at Eagles Landing, I would like to remind people, I see a petrol coke-burning power plant. I see a refinery. I see another refinery. I see an asphalt plant. I see Cleveland Cliffs. So Oregon has its share of industry. And it's what makes Oregon, in my opinion, a great place to live because we can pay for our police, we can pay for our fire, we can pick up trash, unlimited, I think.
Yes.
We have great parks. We pave our roads. We plow our snow. When you call the police, they come. You can come to a city council meeting and get the phone number of the person you need to talk to because you're having a problem with your neighbor. You can't do that in other cities in Northwest Ohio. And city governments, school governments, EMS services need revenue. It's just the fact of the matter. I was in a township meeting not too long ago where the township's trying to acquire a fire truck. And they had a citizen standing up saying, well, you know, we could have bake sales and raise that money.
One minute.
It, it just doesn't work that way. So you're looking at an opportunity that has very low environmental impact. The rules and regulations and permits that they have to go through to build a data center today are different than in the past. I'm going to end with this to prove it, right? I used to drive down Navarre Avenue, and there was an orange haze over Navarre Avenue. It was sulfur coming from the Sunoco refinery. Sunoco didn't go out there and clean that up themselves. It took the federal government to pass regulations to clean up that air, and we're all better off for it. And those standards are what we rely on in the world of economic development from Ohio EPA and federal EPA to make sure the developments that we bring to communities are the right fit and are good for the citizens and good for the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Lori, yes, because you had signed in, you make, finish, you had time left.
I didn't intend to do this. I support Mr. Thompson 110%.
I'm sorry. Make sure that you speak in the mic here.
110%. I've lived here 40-plus years, and I am proud of Oregon, and I love what the, what the mayor has done. Not what everybody want, the changes they want to make that I'm seeing, we already have. Everything I've seen, let's keep transparency. Let's keep family-friendly. I see it all here. And as far as the data center, I'm not as savvy as Mr. Thompson about, but I do have some common sense. So what I think is very, very sad, and I do see this on Facebook, sorry to say, it is a powerful tool. None of these people believe any of you. I'll leave out those two.
Please.
Believe any of you. And I think it's sad, and I've seen it said, like they're going to tell us the truth. I've heard up here, I heard, I went out here, I saw this. I don't, you know, and I've seen good from a lot of people on council, and I believe council. I've had no reason not to believe them. They haven't steered me wrong. So I just want to say, you deserve the support tonight. And I hate to say that these type of people are the people who represent the anti-data center. I think that's very sad, very, very sad. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I suppose 110%.
Thank you. No, sir, you did not sign in. No, I have not, not since we started this.
Mr. President. Excuse me, Mr. President.
Mr. Drake.
I know in the past, not tonight, so Joel, you can shake your head all you want at me. I don't care. I know in the past, there's been people that have come in late, whatever reasons, have been able to come in and speak, even though they weren't able to sign in, whatever their issues were. So I just ask that. You've done it for other people. I think it's only common sense to allow other individuals.
Well, it's not common sense. But two minutes. Name an address for the record.
I'm not going to give you my...
Then you can't, then you can't speak.
This is my time. Hold on. Hear me out. Hear me out. I will provide a cease and desist letter regarding that to Mrs. Perpura about that. I had to say Fourth Amendment violation requires somebody give the name and address. Okay? Thank you. I, I know the language I chose.
Mr. President, just, just let me address, let me with you. I was just going to say, we, we do have a policy for that. The state does, does provide, we're a home rule charter city, and our order of business as council rules does provide for citizens, if they wish to speak, to have to give their name and address. We'll let you talk. We do have the rule.
And I have no problem giving you the lawsuit, or not the lawsuit, but the case law behind it. I have not a problem with that. I'm not trying to come up here and start a bunch of stuff. I'm just trying to prove the point.
I'm just telling you, you said, we do have a policy in place. And it is, it is backed up by the Ohio State statute because we're a chartered city. But go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I understand the chartered city, the aspect you're trying to push here on that. I get it. But there is case law all over the Supreme Court, which supersedes all... It's my two minutes, which supersedes all of that, absolutely. And before I came here today, I clarified with the city council person about the rules for this place. There are no rules. You just go by Robert's Rules of Order. So my signage, while it may be shocking to some, there are a few people here that I spoke to today, a polite, cordial conversation. The sign, the F-word is the most versatile word in the English language. Every form of word, adjective, noun, verb, it covers all of them. That's the only word that can be used such freely. And I mean, some people don't like it, and I get it, and it's okay. There is case law to support that as well. Cohen v. California, guy had a shirt on, said, "F the draft in court." And it was the Supreme Court. John T. V. Campbell, it's not disorderly conduct unless it's fighting words. That's a fighting word, doctor. I'm not here, I am an Oregon resident. I do live here. There's a lot of people here that know who I am. Your chief and deputy chief, they know who I am. Mrs. Perpura knows who I am. Mrs. Pauloff, Mr. Salander. I'm not hiding, but I will stand on the principle. The Fourth Amendment allows us to be secure in a person, papers, houses, and effects. I do not have to give up my information. I get death threats on a regular basis because of what I do. All right? And I'm okay with that. I'll put up with it.
One minute.
Thank you, sir. What you guys need to understand, and I'll, like I said, I'll provide all the case law, is it's not lawful to require that. And I'm not sure if you're aware, but there was someone that spoke here that did not give their name and address. Now it's called viewpoint discrimination. That's a whole other lawsuit, if that goes that way. So I got it on record. I'd be more than happy to sit and talk with you all. My name is Aaron Collins. I am an Oregon resident. There's, they've got my phone number. She's got my phone number. I can be reached on Facebook. Mrs. Salander knows how to get ahold of me, so does Mrs. Pauloff. I, I just ask you, I understand. It's a heated issue. I get it. It's okay. I'm not against you guys. I'm for standing on the law, and that's all there is to it. Thank you, sir.
Our next item on the agenda is the mayor. Mayor, could you please do your two new hires for the fire department?
Yes, President of Council has allowed us to go out of the Rules of Order and go into appointments because there are some firefighters here waiting for this. So I'd ask council's concurrence, let me find this here. And we're, we have two firefighters that we are hiring today to replace those who have left. And I'm going to ask council's concurrence in the appointment. And first appointment of Sarah Ellis to the position of full-time firefighter, two paramedic. She'll be placed at Step 1, which is hourly rate 28.5975, based on 50 hours or an annual salary of $74,353.51. And the startup date would be October 15th, 2025. And I'd ask council's concurrence, once again, of the appointment of Sarah Ellis to full-time firefighter, two paramedic in the Oregon Fire and Rescue.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mrs. Pauloff.
I move to concur with the mayor's appointment of Sarah Ellis to full-time firefighter, two paramedic in the fire department, effective date Wednesday, October 15th, 2025.
Thank you, Mrs. Pauloff.
Second.
Was that Mr. Salander?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Salander. We have a motion by Ms. Pauloff, second by Ms. Salander, to concur with the mayor. Counsel, any objections? Hearing, Mayor, counsel concurs.
And next, and this is also appointment to the fire department in the full-time firefighter, two paramedic. And that would be the appointment of Zachary Bingham. And the, this would be at Step 6, which is hourly rate of 36.5062 or an annual salary of $94,916.33. And the startup date would be October 14th, 2025. And I would ask council's concurrence in the appointment, once again, of Zachary Bingham to full-time firefighter, two paramedic.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mrs. Pauloff.
I move to concur with the mayor's appointment of Zachary Bingham to full-time firefighter, two paramedic in the fire department, effective start date Tuesday, October 14th, 2025.
Thank.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Pauloff. Second by Mr. Salander. Thank you, Mr. Salander. We have a motion by Ms. Pauloff, second by Mr. Salander, to concur with the mayor's appointment. Counsel, any objections? Hearing none, mayor and counsel concurs. And our first item on the agenda for tonight is Item 62. Just if you give me a second. 161 of 2025, being presented by Mayor Seferian and our fire chief, Clayton O'Brien. All of these items were discussed last week and brought, put onto tonight's agenda. So we go quickly through them. That's the reason why they were, have already been explained. With that being said, Chief O'Brien, do you have anything to add?
Mr. President, nothing to add.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we're good?
You're good.
Thank you. Okay, counsel, are there any additional questions on Item 161 of 2025?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Pauloff.
First of all, I really want to thank the fire chiefs for applying for this, and congratulations. I don't think that was said last week. Congratulations on getting the SAFER grant. I do understand the need for grants like this. We are in a deficit of personnel. I myself want the best for you. We have a great team of firefighters in this city, and they deserve to work at full staff. And if anyone recalls, a year and a half ago, it was turned down that we asked the public to put a quarter percent increase in our income tax to pay for these firefighters. And it was suggested by council for them to seek out other revenue. This SAFER grant has nothing to do with the data center. It doesn't. Will we find funds in the next three years? Absolutely, because we know how important it is up here to provide the best services possible. And we are already providing that with the gentlemen that are standing in this room and the gentlemen that work on the police department, the fire department. The police department got a $900,000 grant last year. They, they're supposed to look for their income? No, we need to make it happen, and we need to make sure that this city is safe and has everything that it needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pauloff, and well said. Any, counsel, any further questions or?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Ackerman?
I could not agree with you more, Councilwoman Pauloff. Thank you for that. You were da-da. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, anything further?
Mr. President.
Mr. Salander.
I'd like to third that comment, so thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Counsel, anything further? Hearing none, I will assign Item 161 of 2025 as Ordinance 161 of 2025 and ask Ms. Snyder to please read it into the record.
Authorizing the mayor and finance director and fire chief to accept the staffing for adequate fire and emergency response SAFER grant through the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Counsel?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mrs. Pauloff.
I move for passage of Ordinance 161 of 2025 as an emergency measure.
Thank you, Mrs. Pauloff.
Second.
Second by Mr. Salander. Thank you, Mr. Salander. Ms. Snyder, will you please take a roll call vote of counsel?
Mrs. Pauloff?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Salander?
Yay.
Mrs. Ackerman?
Yay.
Mr. Drake?
Yay.
Mr. Horniac?
Yes.
Mr. Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Wallensack?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Ordinance 161 does pass, 25 does pass with a vote of seven yays, zero nays. At this time, if our firefighters would like to exit that are here tonight, because I know you've got other things going on, please feel free. Our next item on the agenda for passage is Item 162 of 2025, being presented by Mayor Seferian and Police Chief Brandon Beegan. Chief Beegan, anything to add?
Nothing to add. I think Mr. Mazur explained it in depth last week, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Hearing none, I will assign Item 162 of 2025 as Ordinance 162 of 2025 and ask Ms. Snyder to please read it into the record.
Authorizing the mayor and finance director to enter into an agreement with the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, CJCC, One Government Center Suite 1720, Toledo, Ohio, to provide criminal justice information service through the Northwest Ohio Regional Information Systems, NORSE, and records management support for the police division for the period of January 1st, 2026, through December 31st, 2026.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Excuse me.
Oh, yeah. Thanks, sorry.
Nope, nope, you're fine. Counsel?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Pauloff.
I move for passage of Ordinance 162 of 2025.
Thank you, Mrs. Pauloff.
Second.
Second by Mr. Salander. We have a motion by Ms. Pauloff, second by Mr. Salander. Ms. Snyder, will you please take a roll call vote of counsel?
Mrs. Pauloff?
Yes.
Mr. Salander?
Yay.
Mrs. Ackerman?
Yay.
Mr. Drake?
Yay.
Mr. Horniac?
Yes.
Mr. Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Wallensack?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Ordinance 162 of 2025 does pass with a vote of seven yays to zero nays. Our next item on the agenda for passage is Item 163 of 2025, being presented by Mayor Seferian and our IT Director, Ken Meister. Mr. Meister?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have anything to add. Feel free to ask any questions that you have there.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Meister? Hearing none, I will seek, I will assign Item 163 of 2025 as Ordinance 163 of 2025 and ask Ms. Snyder to please read it into the record.
Authorizing the mayor and finance director to enter into contract with Tele System, formerly Buckeye Tele System, 2700 Oregon Road, Northwood, Ohio, to provide voice-long-distance services, internet access service, and point-to-point lines from the municipal building to remote locations for a three-year period at a monthly cost of $3,094.65.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Council? Hearing no additional questions, I need a, can I get a motion to pass this?
Some.
Thank you, Mr. Horniac.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wallensack. We have a motion by Mr. Horniac, second by Mr. Wallensack. Ms. Snyder, will you please take a roll call vote of Council?
Mr. Horniac?
Yes.
Mr. Wallensack?
Yes.
Mrs. Ackerman?
Yay.
Mr. Drake?
Yay.
Mrs. Pauloff?
Yes.
Mr. Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Salander?
Yay.
Thank you, Council. Ordinance one six, of, one sixty-three of twenty-twenty-five does pass with a vote of seven yays, zero nays. Our next item on the agenda for passage is item one sixty-four, and Mr. Roman, would you, if?
Mr. Roman's not here.
No, no. This is Ms., all right, no, thank you. Mr. Roman, we'll just do all three at the same like we did last week?
That would work for me, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I have nothing additional to add on that.
Nothing on any of those?
Correct.
Okay, Council, do you have any additional questions on item one sixty-four? Hearing none, I will assign item one sixty-four of twenty-twenty-five as ordinance one sixty-four of twenty-twenty-five, and ask Ms. Snyder to please read it into the record.
Authorizing the Mayor and Finance Director to enter into contract with Delta Dental Plan of Ohio to provide dental insurance benefits for city employees for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six.
Thank you. Council?
Mr. President.
Mr. Wallensack?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move for passage of ordinance number one sixty-four of two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Wallensack.
Second.
Mr. Horniac, thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Wallensack, second by Mr. Horniac. Ms. Snyder, will you please take a roll call vote of Council?
Mr. Wallensack?
Yes.
Mr. Horniac?
Yes.
Mrs. Ackerman?
Yay.
Mr. Drake?
Yay.
Mrs. Pauloff?
Yes.
Mr. Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Salander?
Yay.
Thank you, Council. Ordinance one sixty-four of twenty-twenty-five does pass with a vote of seven yays, zero nays. On item one sixty-five of twenty-twenty-five, Council, any questions? Hearing none, I will assign item one sixty-five of twenty-twenty-five as ordinance one sixty-five of twenty-twenty-five, and ask Ms. Snyder to please read it into the record.
Authorizing the renewal of the Ohio Plan Insurance Pool coverage and the cyber coverage through Great American Fidelity Insurance Company as administered by Highland Administrative Services LLC, eight-eleven Madison Avenue, Toledo, Ohio, for property and liability insurance coverage, general liability, employer's liability, employee benefits liability, law enforcement officer's liability, public officer's liability, automobile property, special property, electronic equipment and media, crime, boiler and machinery, and excess liability insurance, an initial premium amount of three hundred forty-three thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars, and premium adjustments for additions and deletions and declaring an emergency.
I think you missed one word in there. No, thank you very much. Council, I seek a motion, please.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Wallensack.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move for passage of ordinance number one sixty-five of two thousand twenty-five as an emergency measure.
Thank you, Mr. Wallensack.
Second.
Second by Mr. Drake. We have a motion by Mr. Wallensack, second by Mr. Drake. Ms. Snyder, will you please take a roll call vote of Council?
Mr. Wallensack?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yay.
Mrs. Ackerman?
Yay.
Mr. Horniac?
Yes.
Mrs. Pauloff?
Yes.
Mr. Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Salander?
Yay.
Thank you, Council. Ordinance one sixty-five does, of twenty-twenty-five does pass with a vote of seven yays, zero nays, and Mr., we have item one sixty-six that Mr. Roman had talked about, and Council, are there any additional questions for that? Hearing none, I will assign item one sixty-six of twenty-twenty-five as ordinance one sixty-six of twenty-twenty-five, and ask Ms. Snyder to please read it into the record.
Authorizing and directing the Mayor and the Finance Director to renew an agreement with Stanford Standard Insurance Company to provide life insurance for City of Oregon employees.
Thank you, Mrs. Snyder. Council?
Mr. President.
Mr. Wallensack?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move for passage of ordinance number one hundred and sixty-six of two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Wallensack.
Second.
Second by Mr. Drake. We have a motion by Mr. Wallensack, second by Mr. Drake. Ms. Snyder, will you please take a roll call vote of Council?
Mr. Wallensack?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yay.
Mrs. Ackerman?
Yay.
Mr. Horniac?
Yes.
Mrs. Pauloff?
Yes.
Mr. Reeves?
Yes.
Mr. Salander?
Yay.
Thank you, Council. Ordinance one sixty-six of twenty-twenty-five does pass with a vote of seven yays to zero nays. Having considered all the items on the agenda for this evening, we will now move on to the Mayor's report. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President, and council, before you, correspondence from the Fire Department of three resignations. I'd like to take all three of them together, and first is that resignation of Chad Quapich and his resignation of part-time firefighter, one EMT, would be effective September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, and next would be the resignation of Kelly Moore as part-time firefighter, one EMT, with the effective date of September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, and the third one of Joel Moskowitz, part-time firefighter, one EMT, effective date October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, and I'd ask Council's concurrence in the acceptance of the resignation of these three individuals with the prospective dates as I mentioned.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mrs. Pauliff.
I move to the, I move to concur with the Mayor's acceptance of the resignation of Chad Quapich, Kelly Moore, and Joel Moskowitz from the Fire Department.
Thank you, Mrs. Pauliff.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Salander. We have a motion by Ms. Pauliff, second by Mr. Salander, to concur with the Mayor's resignation of fire personnel. Any objection? Hearing none, Mayor, Council concurs.
And next, with a hire in the Recreation Department, and I'd ask Council's concurrence in the appointment of Heather Romick, concession shift supervisor, classification three, step one, fifteen twenty-five an hour, effective startup date October seventh, twenty-twenty-five, and I'd ask Council's concurrence in that appointment.
Thank you, Mr. President, or Mr. Mayor. I will make the motion to hire Heather Romick of, her address, twenty thirty-eight Greenwood Avenue, at the rate that was presented, to concur with the Mayor. Second by Mr. Wallensack. We have a motion by myself and second by Mr. Wallensack to concur with the Mayor's appointment. Council, any objections? Hearing none, Mayor, Council concurs.
Thank you, Mr. President, with that I conclude my report.
Thank you. Mr. Mazur?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've got a few items. I might be a little windy here, but first off, I wanted to thank everybody that showed up tonight, everybody that spoke, really good input, really good dialogue. I wanted to just ask everybody, please don't think that we take these decisions lightly at all, okay? These are really tough decisions that, that have long-lasting effects for, for the community and surrounding areas, so, but one thing that, I've stated this before, and thank goodness for Steve Schreik, our chief building official, because he went back and dug this information out. Since nineteen sixty-five, that corner of Winn and Corduroy has been planned for industrial. That was called the city's general plan back then, which is now called a master plan or a comprehensive plan. There's different versions of that. And twenty years ago, that plan stayed the same. That, that land on that corner was planned to be developed as industrial land. That's, that's in that plan. So, since then, the city's taken the time and the, and the risk, so I'm going to use this word "risk" a lot, but took the risk of acquiring the properties in order to get a, an industrial development on that land over, over several years. And in the economic development world, we talk about the highest and best use of property. My opinion, being in this, being a practitioner of this, I believe that this is the highest and best use of this property. I've been adamant about that. I haven't wavered on that one bit. It is, I've, I too have visited these data center sites in New Albany. They're, they're quiet. They're not a lot of traffic. And the neighbors, I've talked to neighbors that live by them, they don't notice them. Their words. They don't, I don't even notice them. I don't know what a data center is. These are some of the quotes that I've gotten from some of the people that live by them. You know, I do appreciate a lot of these comments. I'll try to run through them real quick. Julie Mittendorf had a comment about, you know, you know, talking through the, the, you know, I bring up the risk and the transparency, and we, we did put something out, it is still on our city website, an informational sheet on data centers, just giving the background of, and this is specific to the Oregon site. The city has invested eight-point-six million dollars into this with a return of seventeen-point-four million dollars, once we get to that point of closing. You know, and there's a lot of information in there about electric rates, water rates, aesthetics, everything else. That's been up there since, I believe, August eighteenth or thereabouts, so mid to late August is when that was put up there. I do want to follow up with Connie. I do have her email address. I believe that she, she has left since then, but she brought up a lot of points and a lot of different articles that she referenced, and I'd like to get my hands on those so I could read up a little bit more on that. The, Carly had brought, I think she's left too, unfortunately, but she had brought up a lot of questions about the cost of infrastructure, and I believe that the PUCO, the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio, is working on legislation to make any, any new data centers that, that need transmission level upgrades have to pay for that out of pocket instead of passing that on to the consumer, so that is a bonus. One, one thing that the state of Ohio is looking out for us. When we talk about revenues, what makes this site so unique now is that the city owns the property. That's very unique, because you go to any other site, any other economic development site, it's a rarity for a site this size to be actually owned by the municipality, and since we own it, we can help drive some of the inputs and the revenues that we, the city, everybody, would get out of this, along with the schools. So, there's a high property tax value that data centers generate, and all of that revenue can and through careful negotiations will come to the city and the schools, in the, to the tune of millions of dollars. I can't give you that number, an exact number at this point, because the contract is under negotiations. There is a town hall meeting. It is scheduled for November nineteenth. We're hoping to secure it at the gym, or the auditorium, or one of the facilities at the schools, at Clay High School. Talking with the schools now about securing the location, but that is November nineteenth from six to eight PM at this time, so hopefully we can, we can etch that in. Pardon me for a moment.
I will.
But yeah, this is, this comes down to, you know, a risk. If it was easy, anybody could do it. You know, anybody could, anybody could, could do economic development if there wasn't, you know, risk involved, and, you know, it is, it is a tough needle to thread, but, you know, in my opinion, I still stand by that this is the highest and best use of the property. Outside of that, to Ms. Wilber's question about the drinking fountain, our Water Department did go out there, they did do a repair. It was still leaking. They do have to remove the, the entire unit to get to the fix on the drinking fountain. The Tarda bus stops, we did meet with Tarda, we did discuss the, I know, Mr. Smady has just, has left as well, but on Wheeling Street, there are some garbage issues on Wheeling Street. And I think that Chief O'Brien can answer the questions about the, you know, the part-time and the, we can follow up with him on that later, but, yeah, other than that, I think I, looking at my notes here, I think I covered everything, but I just want, again, wanted to thank everybody for their input, appreciate the comments, and that's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mazur, Mr. Mayor.
And I just, a couple of the questions come up, I thought that I'd like to add something too, and when you brought up that there was a inclusive park suggested for the North, or Veterans Park, South Shore Park, and I did make comments, I thought it would be better served if it sat on our complex here. An all-inclusive park would have a cost of approximately a million dollars with the infrastructure around it, and people have the ability to use it and show up more at this park centrally located for, for everybody, and due to the nature of the equipment there, we can secure it better here. Police Department is right on staff, we, we are, there's people around more, and a park like that, I just thought better serve the public on this location versus an all-inclusive park with intricate things and such. At South Shore Park, people that I'm in contact with said they would prefer to see it out here in, in a more centralized area, easier for them to come to, they're more likely to use it. Another thing is, in our industrial park, Mr. Mazur said, we have approximately a hundred and seventy acres, most of it being CI, commercial industrial, and so what people lose track of sometime is, they say, well, we'd like to see that plowed field or a park or, or what, or something other than a data center, and it would be more peaceful, and I agree. However, it is zoned CI, and when we expanded it and, and added the zoning of advanced manufacturing, it was lessening the impact of what could be CI, and so we hoped to attract something that was better than CI, because otherwise, it's, it's the heaviest of any industry that you could put out there, which even though a data center has impact to the surrounding area, it doesn't have close to the impact as the CI does. So, that's why us as administrators up here had come through with many proposals of what we could put. So, our job is to keep finding something to bring revenue in, and if we make a good enough case, it gets passed through, and, and we build it. So, we've had many proposals out there that we've attracted, and like, like I said before, we're looking for revenue, and if someone were to come up with something that would bring in a reasonable dollar in revenue that had less impact than what a data center would, no one has come forward with that. That's just, we need, we need revenue source to pay year three and four and every year after that. So, if it's, if it's not a data center, we need something out there, we need something somewhere to bring in the revenue, otherwise we'll eventually use up all of our reserves, and that's just the bottom line. And people say it's about money? Of course it is. Everything is. But people told me, well, we, we could put residential apartments or something there. They don't bring the city money. They're a liability. They cost us money, because we have to provide services for them. So, anything we put there, we're hoping to get revenue for everyone in this community. And, yeah, we hear everybody's, everybody's concern, and we try to address it. So, if, if it turns out that we do have a data center, we'll do everything in our power to make sure we have the best of the situation, not the worst of anything at any of the other sites from years ago. People bring out all the worst things that happen, and we look at them and we try to avoid them. But in the end, for that property, as Mr. Mazur said, we simply couldn't come up with anything to date that would less impact the city than, especially in our CI-zoned area. Somebody bought that, and they would be able to put whatever CI permits. We wouldn't be voting on it. It's just already permitted. So, we're just trying to make the best, the situation that we can for our city to provide as many amenities to every one of us and provide the best services we can, and that's, that's what we're doing.
Thank you, Mayor.
Fight about it.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Pupora?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Pupora. Mr. Horniac?
Thank you, Mr. President. First off, I just want to congratulate both our chief and assistant chief, it's a lot of work in that SAFER grant, I want to congratulate the Fire Department. Several years ago, we started talking about the move going from a part-time on-call Fire Department to a full-time Fire Department, knowing there was going to be a financial commitment from the city, knowing that we started meeting the new standard and looking at what that would take in, in the additional firefighters, and I believe we started that a little better than a year, year and a half ago with starting to move to bring on the first few. You know, let's start adopting the few as we can with the opportunity that the SAFER grant brought to us, so I do want to congratulate them and thank them for all their hard work on it. It was outstanding work and something the community really appreciates and values. I don't have anything from my standing committee, but I've got a suggestion and a question. Since we've moved the speed limits on Corduroy Pickle Brown Road, since we've reduced those to thirty-five miles an hour in those impact areas, and virtually went the entire summer with that lower speed limit, have we seen any improvement in the danger of those intersections in those roads? Have, have we noticed any improvement? Have we had accidents, no accidents? What, what do we see so far? Sorry to put you on the spot, I apologize.
And, Mr. President?
Chief?
I don't have the data with me. We still have had some crashes at the intersections that we have, have spoken about. We still have had some crashes at the intersections that we have spoken about. I don't have that data with me here. We have also done extra patrols in the area and had extra officers in the eastern and northern part of our, portion of our city to try to slow speeds down. I think it's been effective. And after we implemented that, I've noticed a lowering of speeds in those areas as well, which covers a lot of the roads in those intersections which you're speaking about.
Thank you. Appreciate that. The only other item I have is maybe a suggestion. I don't know about anybody else, but as I've gone to tour, to look at data centers, they don't just let you in. Yeah. And I don't know what the logistics and the legality of it is, but maybe we need to put together a little field trip. Obviously, we know some people who are in this business that might be able to ring a phone and create an opportunity where we could go see, tour a little more firsthand at these. I've been able to look at two in construction and one that's operating, and from the fence, they look just fine. But I think it might be a worthwhile endeavor for us, and maybe that's, you know, a little further down the road here. But I certainly think it would be a good opportunity for all of us to become more familiar firsthand with actual operating data centers. We had a resident that reached out via email and asked a question, and her question was, have you read all the information on data centers? And I said, no, because there is tons of it. And what I have seen, and I have read a lot, but what I have seen is, depending on your vantage point, whether you're for it or whether you're against it, boy, you can certainly tell the author's slant in anything that you look up. It's either, oh, these are the worst things in the world, or, oh, they're not as impactful, and they could be a great financial benefit to your community. So it is a very polarizing topic, but I think if the opportunity were to present itself where we could find a way to visit one, and someone would allow us access to do so, I think it would be a great opportunity. I know I would appreciate that opportunity to be able to get in to see one, because from the fence, the construction looks cool. I got blown away by dust because they were working the farm fields when I was parked out there looking at it. But I think it'd be a great opportunity for all of us to be able to see something actively working. So that would be my suggestion, my request, is maybe we need to try to put together a little field trip. And with that, I close, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Horniak. Mrs. Pauloff.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing from my standing committee. When I get questions from my constituents or from anyone in the city, of course, a lot of the questions that I get are what's really not known. I know that Paul Roman has given so much information about water usage in the closed-loop system. It was brought to my attention that there is a presentation given by Mark Frye from Palmer Energy, and he does our aggregate. Is that correct? He does our aggregate in the city.
All the aggregate.
Okay. Thank you for that. He puts on a presentation for any and all communities on the effects of the electrical and data centers, and I have invited him to come in on Monday, October 27th, at 7:00 and be a speaker and give his presentation to us and to any resident who would like to come and hear what that, what the electrical aspect is with data centers. And he's very knowledgeable about it, and he has agreed. So he will be here on Monday, October 27th, at 7:00 to give that presentation. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pauloff. And thank you for heading this out for us, that Mr. Frye can be here on the 27th. Mr. Wallenzak.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing from my standing committee, but I do have a couple of items that I'd like to discuss today. I wanted to kind of piggyback on what Councilman Horniak has talked about, the intersections that we had spoke about. We were given information through our weekly update that the state is looking at changing their policy on changing traffic patterns and intersections, which could allow us to convert those to four-way stops and not roundabouts, which would save the city about a million dollars per intersection and convert those to safer four-way stops. So I would encourage the city to actively pursue that and keep their eyes open for when that actually does happen, if the state does make that change. Because I think a four-way stop, I know I've spoken with other council members, that we're more inclined to try to change the traffic pattern to a four-way stop as opposed to roundabouts at those intersections. So thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Horniak. I also have traveled to New Albany, Ohio, to look at the data centers down there and all the construction. It's a bit overwhelming, but it's a heck of a lot bigger than what we're going to see here. But I've had the same experiences as the others that have went down to New Albany, just pulled into people's driveways and randomly knocked on their doors to ask the residents, you know, explain to who I am, why I'm standing in their driveway, and engage in conversations with residents. So, you know, I believe it's incumbent upon all of our council members to actively seek out voices that have went through this. So I encourage all of us to seek that out and gain independent knowledge of what residents are seeing. Moving on with the data center, as we negotiate, as I, I know you guys, the city eventually will enter into a negotiation phase with a development agreement. I would encourage us to not tie any payment to property tax, because I would assume that data centers will eventually try to petition state governments to change how they are taxed and potentially change the way the property tax is valued. I just want to make sure that if this does come, if they do choose to come into our city, and it is agreed that they come, I want to make sure that money is tied up or committed to our city and where they can't backdoor their way out of the commitment. So if we can do something like, as a service for operation in the city as opposed to in lieu of property tax, it's all language in a contract, I would encourage us to do that. And I do want to express to the residents of the community that do come valid concerns. They, and they, we need to hear their concerns, and we need to address the concerns of our residents. Doesn't mean we may agree or disagree with their concerns, but they're valid, and we have to continue to listen to our constituents and our residents. And I know that I've spoken with at least one other council member about a couple of these things. We don't think that there's going to be a noise issue with this. But our penalty phase of our, of our noise ordinance is so minimal. If we could do something to have a tiered system that if they violate the terms of our ordinance, if we can put more teeth and more bite into that to dis encourage, or to encourage them to make sure they follow our ordinance, I think we should look at doing something like that, just to give it a little bit more bite if there's a chance that it does happen where they exceed some of those noise ordinances. And I have some other ideas that we can talk about beyond this, but I think I've spoken enough for tonight, and I appreciate the time, Mr. President.
No, Mr. Wallenzak, you hit the head, the nail on the head several times, and I know I agree with you, and I'm assuming, and I don't like to assume, but most everybody's in agreement with what you came up with. But thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wallenzak.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
Just to expand on one thing Councilman Wallenzak brought up about checking out the payment in lieu of taxes. We have sought out additional counsel that's professional and that's in that manner because of the changing tax code that may came up, might be voted out in the state of Ohio to try to safeguard that our, what our holdings will be. And so we're trying to cover that aspect at this, at this very moment. You know, we've been working on that as we, you know, daily.
I appreciate you acknowledging that, Mayor. I know it's, if and when this does come to a head, I just want to make sure we're protected. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, Mrs. Ackerman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to apologize for being absent last week. I, my granddaughter, down south, they have a fall break. It doesn't work for farmers, but we did it anyway. Anyway, it was for a really good cause. My seven-year-old granddaughter became a junior park ranger in the state of Florida, and I think that was huge, huge event for our family. And I know it may seem trivial, but I do want to give condolences to Mrs. Wolf on the loss of her son last, it was over a week ago, two weeks ago almost. I'm very sorry for you, and I just want you to know we, you have our sympathy. And I apologize for being sort of melancholy tonight. My neighbor passed away, and they had his celebration of life right before, from 6:00 to 8:00 tonight. And so whenever I see, he was a great American and very proud patriot, and whenever they do the taps and the flag, the honor guard, I always am very, well, she about that. Anyway, so I apologize for being off kilter tonight. I do want to know if, Mr. Roman's not here, does anyone have a report about the community collection that Oregon conducted last Saturday? I was out of state.
Mr. President, Ms. Ackerman, there is a preliminary report, but not the final numbers, like the dollar figures, but there are numbers that have been produced. I can forward those over to you. They are preliminary, so they'll be refined a little bit, and usually it takes a couple weeks for Andrea to put together, maybe a little longer sometimes, depending on when invoices come in of the final report on that. So sometimes it's two weeks to a month when she, when she gets that done. So I can forward that over to you right now.
Oh, thank you. And thank you to the city of Oregon for having that community collection, and I hope we can have them more frequently in the future. I do apologize for the extra dust during this drought. Harvest is bad enough without that. So I do apologize. Everyone's windows are even dustier. We're trying. We get done, get out of there. I, I do want to say that the inclusive park was proposed by the widows of the two boys that were killed.
The Morrisseys.
Yeah, the Morrissey boys, Ben and Max. It, I was approached by it, and then I approached council, and it was the widows that wanted it at South Shore Park so that their children could drive by and see that memorial to their, to their fathers. And I know that it was a source of debate whether here or there, but I just want to make sure that that's understood, that that was the request of the widows of those two men. And I know we, the administration put it on the back burner till next year, and so we will be revisiting it during the budget negotiations, which are going to start up here pretty soon. Thank you for, Mrs. Pauloff, for setting that up with Mark Frye. I look forward to hearing what he has to say. And I think, yeah, that's, that's it. This has been, I just can't, I'm so thrilled. I know it's painful to have a lot of public dialogue, but it wasn't that long ago when there wasn't any allowed, and it got moved to then, to the meeting after the votes, and it's back where it belongs. And even though sometimes we hear things we don't want to hear, or things that are distasteful or unpleasant, it is the only opportunity that citizens have to address their administration and their elected officials as a whole body, and so I'm very grateful for it, as painful as it can be sometimes for all of us. But I think, thank everybody for persevering in that. And with that, that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ackerman. Mr. Salander, if you would, please, just for a second.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Major's going to add something about the Morrissey brothers. So, Mr. Major, if you would, please, or would you like me to send it to Mr. Wallenzak?
Actually, we'll hold off on saying anything. We still got some context to make.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that. Mr. Salander.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing from my standing committee, so just a few quick points, and I'll try to not be, I try to be brief. First of all, yes, thank you and congratulations on the hard work for the grant. I know it's not easy. I know it takes time, and there's a lot. So I appreciate that, and congratulations to the fire department, because you are very important, police, fire, very, very important. We may not use you every day, but when we need you, we want you to be there. So thank you. Thank you for doing that. Also, thank you for whoever it was that actually got the town hall set up on November 19th. Thank you for that. I do appreciate that very much. And then also, thank you, Ms. Pauloff, also, for that on the 27th, getting, having him be able to come to. I think the more conversation we can have, and the more information we can have from people, much smarter than me, you know, I'm not an engineer, and I don't understand those things as much. So here, having people be able to be here to be able to have that conversation is very beneficial, I think, for myself and for many of us. So thank you for that. And thank you for the individuals and all of you who are still here, too, that came out tonight to speak. I know a few people mentioned how they were nervous. It's nerve-wracking. I know. Been there, done that. You know, standing up there in front of all of us, you know, it's, yeah, it's nerve-wracking. So thank you for doing that, though, because your opinions are important and they are valid, like Mr. Wallenzak said as well. So thank you. And finally, I was able to volunteer with the Haunted Trail this weekend out at Maumee Bay State Park. I don't know if anyone and their families maybe made it out there, but it was a blast, so much fun. There were 11 different stations of different groups that had done them. Everybody from toddlers to adults actually had spaces out there. So it was really great and a heck of a lot of fun. Saturday, it's, the scare part of it started at 7:00, and we were over there until 10:00. It was a steady line all the way through from 7:00 to about 9:40. So it was busy, but everybody had a great time. I don't think there were any incidents out there of anybody getting hurt or anything, so it was outstanding, outstanding. So thank you for all, everybody who put that on. It was a great time. We'll see you next year. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Salander. Mr. Drake.
Yeah, just some follow-ups from last week. The South Shore Park equipment, I know it was talked about again. I know Joel had replied, and I believe Mr. Borton did. Hopefully, they can get the water working. Also, the ADA equipment, I don't know where, I haven't heard nothing on that, if people with disabilities, there's a lot of equipment. I know Finley has a Miracle League. It's like a turf for softball and baseball-type skills. Also, I asked about the use of the senior center. I know Joel was going to check with Ms. Bennett. I haven't heard back. And one other thing, Dennis, you're talking about ordinances of following up with things, and, you know, I think it's great, but, you know, like I mentioned, I believe it was last meeting, we have a lot of blithe areas, tall grass, weeds, vehicles parked. It's like a junkyard in some locations, and I know the mayor and Joel, the one day we drove by and looked at one. I'm not sure where that's going. I keep going by, and there's still crap all over the place. I believe the house they made up, put a fence up now to try to hide it. So hopefully, like I've mentioned before, we live in a city. We don't live in a township. Ordinances are there for a reason, to keep the neighborhoods and the city clean and nice-looking, and hopefully in the future, I know. nice-looking, and hopefully in the future, I know political signs were in the right-of-way early on. I know I was one of them. I moved it. So I just wanted to bring that up with all the other issues, and hopefully something can be done with the, at South Shore Park. I know they, there's not a whole lot that I believe, even when I worked for the city, they didn't ask for a whole lot. I think sometimes that part of the city has been forgotten about, and I think they deserve, you know, the services and good things that everybody in this city gets. So that's just my opinion, and as long as I'm here, I'll be sure to speak up for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drake. I have nothing from my standing committee, but I do have something I'm going to read here tonight, and it's about the Ohio real estate tax legislation, and I want to share the conversations in Ohio happening around the reduction of real estate taxes. The state legislator, legislature is currently focused on reducing property taxes across the state. For decades, state tax policy has gradually shifted the burden away from businesses and the state placing more of the items on families. Back in 1991, homeowners and farmers paid 47% of the school property taxes. Today, that number has climbed to nearly 70%. And according to the Auditor of State, when adjusted, adjusted for inflation, state funding for education has actually declined since 2000, with the per pupil funding increasing just 6% over 22 years. Ohio currently is 45th in the nation in state funding for public schools. Despite these challenges, our schools have continued to consolidate, share services, and stretch every dollar to do more with less. In many communities, schools are among the largest employers. So when cuts happen, they don't just affect the classroom, they impact the entire local economy. We are considered sustainable and equitable ways of, to fund our schools. It's important to recognize the property taxes have long been the cornerstone of public education funding in Ohio. Significantly, reducing or eliminating them would require alternative revenue sources, most likely a substantial increase in income tax. This isn't a scare tactic. I'm just telling you what's, what they're working on through November here. And then it, they, unlike property tax, which are based on home values, income tax are tied to earnings, meaning the general public, especially working families, would face a heavier financial burden to maintain essential services like education, police, fire, and municipal services. We all agree reform is necessary. Families deserve relief, but we must also protect the strength of our schools, the safety of our neighborhoods, and the reliability of local services. Achieving that balance is possible, but only if we're, only if the responsibility is shared fairly among families, businesses, local governments, and the state. And here is how we, what we can do to help make a difference. Reach out to our legislators and advocate for balanced tax reform. Ask legislators, what would be the loss of school funding, meaning for our students and our community? What funding will replace either some or all of the real estate tax that will be removed from public schools and potential police, fire, and local municipalities budgets? Share these facts with your neighbors, friends, and communities. It's not a scare tactic. It's a, it's a truth. That's what's, that's what the legislature wants to do at the state, and it, we will know more come the 1st of December. Now, with, with that, Mr. Mayor, you had one more thing you wanted to talk about?
I did. I was prepared to come in with a proclamation tonight. I had the luxury of living across the street from a young man. His name is Mason Heinchel, who started the last two weeks for Pitt and was their starting quarterback and won both games, and had a proclamation. His dad was going to come here tonight and receive that, and Mason called back and said he'd rather wait till the end of the season and come here in person, and he was honored that, that I would think of it, but I said, not as honored as I was to have you as across-the-street neighbor. And I think there's a whole lot of TVs in the city of Oregon that was featuring the Pitt game this Saturday against Florida State when he led his team to a victory. And I know I, I am very excited for the young guy who I seen grow up, and I think a lot of our communities, and I want to know him to know that this whole community is proud of him.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to piggyback off you a little bit, I was in the town of Portland, Oregon, and they said Oregon, okay? And I was watching him. So like you said, the, the thing of, about being from Oregon, I was out in Oregon at a wedding and watching it. They weren't happy, but I was at least watching it. With that being said, if there's nothing else further for... Yeah, go, yes. You need to come up to the mic.
Laura Davis, 5494 Bay Shore. I just want to say that our UNO group, United Neighbors of Oregon, so started August 25th. We have members, but we are speaking, letting the residents know about the data center. The activity by the gentleman with the sign is not, we're not condoning that. That's not our image that we want to represent. So I just want to apologize on behalf of the UNO group that that is not what we represent.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. If there is nothing further for us, I would seek a motion to adjourn.
So moving, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Horniak. Thank you, Mr. Drake. Or, um, Wallenzak. Thank you.